Okay, I'd like to call the meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Councilman Deacon?
Here.
Councilman Bell?
There.
Supervisor Ryan?
Here.
Councilman Brown?
Here.
Councilman Lucia?
Here.
Okay. We have guest speakers today, so did you wanna start?
I'm here to speak about the subsequent increases in the truck that you guys have ordered under New York State contract bid. As you know, I'm sure you already know that there is a truck that is coming next, which is actually identical to the truck that's sitting out here. That has a sixty-two hundred and fifty dollar increase in surcharges and freight charges. Now, first thing people ask me is, well, it's a contract, it should be under contract. The truck is under contract. The thing is, the things that don't qualify the contract are freight charges, surcharges, and I believe there's something with warranty too, but that all kind of falls into that as well, the warranty does, but could be included in that, but the other does not. So, there is this an increase in the truck that is ready to come up here, and I just wanted to try to explain a little bit, not necessarily give you the right answers, but just try to explain what happens. Basically, when the truck was ordered on four twenty-three twenty-one, there were no surcharges, but there was a freight charge of twenty-three fifty. Since the truck has been done and gotten to us, the truck is now fifty-five hundred in surcharges, and the freight charges went up seven hundred and fifty dollars. There are usually surcharges also on tires, but on this particular model, we got Michelin tires, so there were no surcharges on the tires themselves. So it is only an increase of sixty-two fifty. It's a bad situation that everything is in because you can't get trucks, you can't, I mean, we literally just got told yesterday that we're done till the second quarter of next year's order, but cannot order anything. Actually, there's one truck we're allowed to order, but it's far few between. I should also note that you have one more truck coming.
Right, go ahead.
We don't know the exact surcharges and freight charges that that will incur because the truck's not gonna be built yet. I can tell you that right now, at this point in time, they're talking about an additional forty-seven fifty at this point. But until the truck is done and they have an invoice, they can't tell us. They just don't know. So that puts the one that's at our shop, ready to come up, at your convenience, to from two oh nine seven one seven point thirty-four to two one five nine six seven point thirty-four. I did speak to Jay Ost, who is, I believe he's done some leasing slash financing for you folks. He said that there may very well be a way to take those dollar amounts and not necessarily, can't add them into what you've already got, but add on something additional, which would take next to no time if, if it wasn't something you could just come up with in cash. However, I'm looking for options. I wish there was something more I could do, but I am the bearer of that, and I do apologize for that. Do you have questions for me?
Um, I don't have a question, but just a statement because that was the second truck that we bought.
Mm-hmm.
And if I remember correctly, we got that at the same price as the truck we had bought earlier, so we already saved then, I believe.
Similar price, if I'm not mistaken. I believe there was a slight increase.
Mm-hmm.
But the truck was very much the same, but not built on the same day.
Right. Oh yeah, I'm not saying price. I'm saying that we were lucky to not have an increase at that time.
Yeah. This, this is accurate, you know, we've slid through a couple of them, you know, I'm, I'm hearing horror stories of other towns getting twelve and fifteen thousand dollar surcharges. You know, we're, we're, they try to keep it to a minimum as best they can.
Right.
They, they, especially the municipalities who need these vehicles more than pretty much anybody. I shouldn't say anybody, everybody needs to move stuff and truck stuff, but municipalities without, can't get to work, you know what I mean?
Right.
So we understand how important it is, but, and I've talked to them, I've tried to get them to go lower, but they just, there's nothing they can do.
Mm-hmm.
In fact, the people that we deal with at Navistar have really zero hope.
Yeah.
I have other situations that are even worse, 'cause there are two years since the truck was ordered, and it's they've been waiting for the truck for over a year, it's been done a year ago, and now I still have to go to them and say, there's an increase. And his jaw dropped when I told me.
Mm-hmm. And the same truck now would be way more, wouldn't it?
I'm gonna say a minimum of twenty to thirty thousand.
That's what I was hearing, yeah.
A minimum.
About eighty percent higher.
Yeah, it's, it, and again, the longer it takes, the more these surcharges seem to go up, freight charges too. Freight charges are, you can't get people. We have trucks that are sitting that we can't even get delivered to us to get finished or, or delivered. They're just sitting. And there's a lot of supplier issues, and that's the reason that they literally just called us off two days ago and said, you can't order trucks for now, and you're gonna have to wait till the second quarter if anybody wants a truck. That's hard to do. I mean, if someone, you know, there's towns that have accidents or crashes, and you need to replace that truck or what, and there's nothing there. There's just nothing out there.
Yeah. What would the estimated delivery date be for this truck?
Uh, which one?
The, the highway truck, the plow.
That's at the shop, it's ready to go. I just have to re-watch it and bring it up.
Ready to go. So this is a set number, it's not gonna change, the sixty-two fifty?
No, that's not. That is set. The one that's not set is the refuse truck that's coming.
Okay. But the garbage truck might go up.
The one that you need more than it.
Okay.
No date. No date on that.
No, I, no date on that truck, no.
How about a year?
No, 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 it shouldn't be that long. Again, they, they already cut us off for, for new orders, so, you know, and that's, I did not look at that recently or can't remember. It was, uh, it shouldn't be too, too much longer before CBJJ gets the truck to put the body in, but I know the body's there, if I'm not mistaken.
Mm-hmm.
He told me, he's like, yeah, I've got that, it's waiting.
Okay.
By the first later, maybe?
No guarantees, but that's not too far off.
I'm just looking at it for a budget perspective. Should it be in this year? Should it be in next year?
It's probably gonna be in next year's budget, yes.
How were these potential surcharges addressed in the contract that we signed?
Because of the timing of when you sign the contracts, I don't believe they were addressed because there were no surcharges that were, they're just freight charges.
No, I, I Okay, I Let me rephrase that. I realize that there were no dollar amounts or surcharges in the contract we signed, but was there language suggesting that there was a potential for surcharges? What I'm getting at is, what's our obligation under the contract? Do we have to pay this? And if we don't, what are the consequences?
No truck. That's how little on the I'ma guy contract.
Even though we have a contract?
But, yes, because the truck didn't change, the price of the truck has not changed. That is the same. What has happened is the surcharges and freight charges, which have nothing to do with the contracted price, and that's stated in eight nine nine six, uh, the contract number. You, you'll see that there are certain things that are not guaranteed in the, in the contract.
Well, that's what I was asking for.
So the freight one, my question.
You, you just answered my question. Still, it's a terrible answer because we didn't know this was happening until after your trucks, well, actually, I may have done another refuse truck, I don't know. Is it, that's the timeline where it was just starting to become, issues were starting to happen, and then all this continued to just boom, 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 and it's, it's not getting better, it's getting worse.
It's not anybody's fault, and it's happening everywhere. It's everywhere.
It is happening everywhere, but it's still, and I understand what, I completely agree with you. What, what could you, what can we do? And I've tried different options to say what, what can happen, but the only, the only option is to not have the truck, but I can't imagine you want to do that. Especially since, let's say you were ordered one now, that language is definitely in there on, on, on my end, where I live, and your twenty to thirty grand hire is active. And
That's the truth, yeah.
But that's the truck, I'm not necessarily saying the body and the car.
Right.
So, so just so I'm clear, there's someplace, and I reviewed this, but someplace in the contract, there's language that says we may face potential surcharges without a dollar amount. So legally, we're on the hook for these?
Yeah, yes, to get the truck. Technically, yes, because surcharges and freight charges do not, they do not apply. I just, I can't tell you exactly what the verbiage is, I would have to get that.
Yeah.
And I can get that to you, I will find where it is, and I will get that to you.
And, and just to be clear, who, who's imposing the surcharges?
Navistar.
The manufacturer.
The manufacturer, which is international or trade group, which is the main company who now owns everything.
And they're the ones who are shipping it as well, yeah.
They, they, and we can't now, until very recently, we were not allowed to go get certain trucks, 'cause Zuzu is allowing us to go get their trucks, 'cause they can't get them out of their yards, they can't.
Okay.
And we're still not allowed to go get Internationals yet, um, in Texas and what have you. I believe that they may start doing that soon, but you're, the, the list truck we're talking about is already here, so. Um, the other truck, it, it's possible to go get it, it's, it might end up being quicker, but would it, the, the, they're still gonna hit you with surcharges, and the freight charges aren't gonna make a difference because we still have to pay somebody to go down and get the truck, and that's gonna be very similar. So we'd like to leave that in the hands of freight companies, who, you know, we know how to move trucks with a property without damage.
So if we agree to this, how do we know the next time they're not gonna say, surcharge twenty-five thousand dollars?
There's no
I mean, there is no guarantees, but I'd like to, that's part of the reason I'm here personally, is to assure you that they already told me that one's at, what I say, around forty-seven right now.
There's no guarantees.
It's probably going to change. I just don't know if it's gonna be a hundred dollars or seven hundred dollars, or, again, shouldn't be twenty-five thousand dollars? No, absolutely not. No, no, no. That won't happen.
But I can budget for that in the contingency part of our budget to cover what it may be.
And again, Jake also mentioned that he would be able to help on, on this. I think he'd have to do two separate things because he couldn't put it all on the, the next year's refuse truck. Because then it couldn't, Navistar can't get paid until that truck gets there, so they can't do it that way. He's gotta do this on this truck, and then on this truck, if it needs to be done.
Right.
This is just a, another option that, you know.
I'd rather keep those payments the same, speaking for myself, I'd rather just pay it. I would rather just pay it. I'd like to bring a resolution to the floor to pay the six thousand two fifty so we get our truck.
Right.
I'll second it.
Oh, okay.
If we do.
Unless you have more discussion.
No.
I have more questions.
Okay.
Not done yet. Um, it's, it's not that I'm opposed to getting the truck by all means, I'm not. It just, obviously, you're here and you're telling us this, and you're, you're obviously uncomfortable with it. Our contract is with your company.
It's with Navistar, it's not with H.O.G.A.T. It is with Navistar. The contract is not with H.O.G.A.T.
Yeah, so
Okay.
But I am the representative who, who put this, it together, and it's, it's
Sales, yeah.
So I guess my question is, and, and before we make a motion and do this, I'm, I'm wondering if we shouldn't ask the town attorney, and, and
Nah, I don't think we should. No.
Well, the thing is, if we have a contract with Navistar, how can they change the terms of the contract without?
They didn't. They didn't. They're not.
Okay.
Just the surcharges, freight charges, and warranty fees. Those are the things that are not part of the truck contract. You're buying a truck and a body and plows, and the whole setup through the I'ma guy contract. Viking is part of that, they have a contract as well, and now, I'm assuming they have no charges, no additional charges. Viking seems to be doing well in it. I know they've had to hit a few people, but you guys are not in this situation. You've not been hit. I don't know if they kind of foresaw this coming for shadow, I, I don't know. They were good with everything, so they don't have any, but it is through Navistar that these surcharges and freight charges additional are coming through.
And talking to other towns and other companies that build these trucks, they're having the same problems with surcharges. It's not just Navistar, it's any of them.
It's not.
International, any of freight, like, it don't matter.
And No, it still leaves a bad taste in your mouth. It makes me look like the bad guy.
And they're all the same. Exactly, right. I do research in that, and they're all the same, everyone.
You know, and I Actually, um
Western stars?
They're worse.
They're worse. They are, yeah.
I'm not, you know, I don't wanna name names, but, you know, I've, I've heard some stories.
I did, you know, I had.
And, and I'll tell you, if they were making enough money, they might eat it, but contract, big prices are, there's nothing there. They, they, they have to, they know that the municipalities need the trucks, and they need them at a reduced price, and they also wanna see their trucks on the roads, so they do all this extra stuff for municipalities. There's actually, this, where everything gets sent is Loudmouth, that's the New York State office for international or Navistar to take care of all of it, and they do New York State DMT, they do Connecticut DMT there. They do a lot. And they handle these, these pricing, these pricings. It's all done through Navistar. So I am simply the liaison to, to do this.
And who would we be paying this to?
Um, just like the last truck, Navistar goes, it goes all to Navistar. However, in fact, what has to happen is this sheet would need to be redone so that they could match it up to the exact numbers.
Oh, that's one of our vouchers, is that what that is?
Yep, that's a voucher from, from, from you all. And that's how
So we have one more payment, I think, or one or two more payments on this truck, so we pay that now in advance, and, and then finish out our payment plan?
You don't need to, by no means. No, because that's still, that's done through, through, they, again, have, they're Navistar's, they talk to each other, so there will probably be a lien for that company on the truck when the title comes in.
Just like for the other payment?
And then, correct, and as soon as it's paid off from them, they will just, uh, give you a, a lien release or, or what have you.
I see.
And then, you know, some people like to go to the title bureau and get that changed. Personally, I do not, I just take it all together. In fact, I think the title bureau has actually said, just take them together and leave them, you know, don't rig it.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
You don't need to if you have all that documentation. But some people don't want, that they wanna get the title with nothing on it, which is fine, either way, they'll, they'll charge it for that, though.
Yeah, doesn't matter. Mm-hmm. Okay. Do you have any more discussion? Do you? No? Do you wanna be?
That's land, bro.
No?
Did you, did you guys have a motion to, to assess?
Oh, yeah, but we stopped it because there was more discussion, but now I'd like to bring that to the floor again, to, um,
Yeah, yeah, we're
To pay the six thousand two fifty to get the truck, a resolution to pay that, and I just gotta find a budget code number to pick it up.
So you, you want to bring that to the floor now?
Yep.
I'll second it.
So what, what, what is the, what to agree?
A resolution to pay the, the surcharges and
Freight?
Freight for the highway truck. I don't know what it's called.
Call it additional surcharges and freight charges.
Okay, pay additional. On the what truck? What, what's the truck?
It's, uh, the HB six thirteen.
HB, isn't it, six thirteen?
Yep, correct. Titanium dump truck.
What, what I really don't know, the fact that we have a price change.
Finally, Deb.
I'm just looking for, um, code. Could be that code. Could be that code. Could be this one. Okay, five one three oh point two. All right, and the code to take it from? You need a code?
Okay.
It's DA five one three zero point two.
Five one three zero point two?
Yeah.
In which category is that what's called?
That's machinery.
Machinery equipment.
Yeah, machinery and equipment.
Five one three oh point two, machinery?
Yeah. Yeah, it's got forty-two thousand still in it, probably because there'd be another future payment out of it, but we'll deal with that then. Okay, so you seconded it, now we just need to vote.
Yeah.
Okay, who ma, who did the motion?
I did the motion.
Deb did the motion and Ed did the second.
Yep. Roll call.
Uh, Councilman Deacon?
Yes.
Councilman Bell?
Yeah.
Supervisor Ryan?
Yes.
Councilman, um, Brown?
Yes.
Councilman Lucia?
Yes.
Thank you for your time, folks. I can't, I can't apologize enough.
I know, but everybody's still, everyone's going through that right now. We're hearing it everywhere. So can I just get a copy of that?
Did I trash track you?
I'm gonna turn around and, where's my truck?
Where'd I got that trash truck, sorry.
Can
I, I wish I could do something with those.
Can I get a copy of the voucher we need to change?
Uh, yes.
Or is it something I can just write down what we need to do?
It's your voucher, to be honest with you. I have
That's the dollar amount difference. I just wrote, hand-wrote it this, this afternoon.
Oh, that's, okay, I can
And you can, you can have that, I have a copy.
Do you have a copy?
And, um, I'd be happy to do this again, um, next time.
Next time.
Thank you, Mark.
Hopefully
We don't want you to do it again.
I, I know, I know, but hopefully if you do this dollar amount, that it's now, but I just know
No, it's okay. This is, we under, we understand.
Appreciate you coming.
Again, if there's ever questions, I will actually now look for that because of your question. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Okay, and if I do find it, I'm gonna get a copy of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. I wanna see it.
And I have All right, thank you. And I have a copy of that contract upstairs. I can get it from you.
Yeah, Mark, thank you.
There's gotta be language in there.
Yeah, but it's just, you know
If there isn't language in there, then technically they can't get away with it because our attorney could, our attorney could force that to a, to a
And that's true, but then the next time we buy a truck, it'll just be put in there. It's not, you know. Okay, so did you guys have a presentation, or are you just here to witness anything?
No, uh, we're, we're watching a board meeting last month, and there were some questions raised about the status of BMS in the town of Thurmond, and maybe, um, you know, with the establishment of the tax district in, in Warrensburg, and so I just wanted to come up, um, and ask you guys if you have any questions, and let you guys know that there is no plan of any change, that things are gonna continue business as usual. Um, the establishment
And your name is, and your name is?
Huh? My name is Cory Lett, the president of the squad.
Okay. Okay.
So, um, I just, I didn't want anybody to be wondering or questioning what would be happening or anything like that. There was no, um, I know if, if Dad and I have not had any conversation starts changing anything as of yet, so, um, I just assume that's every year prior since the contract was signed years ago, it was two thousand fourteen or something that the contract was signed. We're just gonna continue providing services as we always have.
That's good to know, um, because I had been told that you would have to supply Warrensburg twenty-four seven, and I was told that we had to figure out what we were gonna do. So whoever told me that wasn't telling me accurate information.
No.
I even got a call from the county to find out what my tax levy was gonna be for the district, and I said, we don't, we aren't part of the district.
Right.
So, mm-hmm.
Do you have an idea what the numbers are, calls to Thurmond?
Um, I, I have an idea of the numbers, but they're not exact. I'd have to pull the records, but I wanna say that usually calls in Thurmond are around fifty calls a year. Sometimes it's a little bit less, sometimes it's a little bit more, but we usually estimate around fifty calls a year in the town of Thurmond.
That's what I thought, yeah. And how many does Warrensburg have?
Town of Warrensburg has, um, well, I mean, I think between, uh, nine and eleven hundred calls a year.
Okay.
Um, and then we have, um, there's probably forty to fifty calls in the town of Stony Creek.
Forty to fifty?
Um, and, and so, you know, Stony Creek will respond to a small portion of their, their calls. And there's also a lot of calls that were dispatched too that were canceled on or standbys and things like that that we don't actually respond to. But would say it's safe to say that we do, um, I think we're estimating like eleven to twelve hundred transported patients this year, and so this year, you subtract, you know, fifty calls for Thurmond and four to fifty for Stony Creek, and the rest is probably
So Thurmond and Stony Creek are about even, really?
Usually pretty comparable, yeah, yeah. Um, through COVID, it was a little hippy because everything kind of like died down, and then they got really, you know, went quite, quite high,
Yeah.
and so now we're starting to level out a little bit, so.
Mm-hmm.
But I can get you guys an exact report number, how many transport they gave you like for twenty twenty-one, how many transported patients moved, and also do a year-to-date, so.
Mm-hmm. So how do you feel about the district part of it?
Um, as far as the district part, it's, it's refreshing, um, to have support of the town in establishing a district
Mm-hmm.
because, um, it basically makes things a little, you know, as far as we're concerned, it makes things a little bit more, um, consistent and more guaranteed, I don't know for the lack of better words. Um, it allows us to have a little bit more funding, a lot of bit more funding, I'll say. Because right now, uh, we do well, we do well for what we have, but our budgets are strapped. We don't have, um, replacement funds for ambulances, equipment.
Yeah.
Um, we try to manage as we go, you know, if something breaks, try to fix it or try to buy it and figure out where we have it in the budget. Um, we're maxed out on staffing. Staffing has gotten super expensive, um, particularly because the rates for staff have gone up so much in the last three or four years.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, and they, they've gone up, you know, a lot over the last ten years, but if you look like three years ago, we were paying, um, medics like eighteen dollars an hour. Now we're paying medics up between twenty-three and twenty-five dollars an hour, so it's gone up a lot. Um, and, you know, it's not like you can go without it, right? I mean, you can't go without staff. Um, and staff is really hard to come by because there's not enough providers to go around. So when there's four people in a room looking for jobs and there's ten people wanting to hire them, it's a matter of who provides the best pay, the best benefits, and, you know, then, then you have things like culture, morale, and equipment that come into play.
Mm-hmm.
Um, you know, it, it's been hard to secure staffing. We haven't been able to offer PTO, we haven't been able to offer insur, health insurance, retirement.
Now can you?
Um, yeah, we're gonna be able to. We're gonna be able to establish, um, you know, for employees to have retirement and employees to have, um, health insu, uh, ability to obtain health insurance,
Oh, good. Mm-hmm.
um, and daytime off and things like that, so.
That'll help, it's true.
It will help, yeah, yeah. And, you know, one of the, and another, one of the big things are, is we're gonna be able to have replacement, um, plans for, you know, ambulances and equipment.
Yeah.
So we're, you know, be able to set aside money every year for an ambulance, you know, for replacing seven five zero, which is one of our ambulances that we set aside every year. You know, we figure an eight-year replacement plan, so we set aside money every year for eight years, and then at the end of that, that term, have that money to then replace that ambulance. Where now, we've been financing it, and if you figure you finance an ambulance that costs a hundred and, you know, forty thousand dollars, you know, and you, you know, four percent, four and a half percent interest on that over eight or ten years, you're paying a lot of money, it goes out the door and interest.
And interest, yeah.
Well, you know what I mean? So then you multiply that times two or three ambulances, I mean, you're paying probably seven or eight thousand dollars. I think, I think I figured it was like thirty or forty thousand dollars, and you're pushing the loan, you're paying interest, and you multiply that times three pieces of apparatus, that's a lot of money.
How many ambulances do you have now?
We have three, yeah.
Three.
What's the size of your budget?
Size of the budget currently is around, is, I think it's just over six hundred thousand. Um, with the size of the budget, but with the tax district, I think we're, I wanna say nine, I didn't bring anything like that with me, but I think we're like around nine thirty or nine forty.
Forty-five.
Yeah.
Did they calculate the tax rate on that yet?
Yes, yeah.
And what is it?
Tax rate on that was, um, ninety-five cents.
Okay.
I believe it was. I believe that's what it was. Maybe about ninety, it's somewhere between ninety-two and ninety-five cents. So. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't have any of that stuff readily available for me today, I was not in the office today.
Mm.
Um, but I didn't wanna make an appearance at the meeting, just 'cause I didn't want you guys wondering what's gonna happen, you know, January first, and I didn't want you to think like we're just gonna like up and abandon the town.
Take our name off your ambulance, yeah.
Yeah, that, that's been like one of my main things, like, you know, I was a captain of Johnsburg way back on two thousand ten, eleven, twelve, and, you know, so I, you know, I was, friends with and worked alongside with the people that were part of Thurman EMS, um, and, and a lot of them worked with me up in Johnsburg, and I know that some of them also worked in Warrensburg, but things kind of got a little bit hairy at times. I know that there's always been some kind of, you know, feelings back and forth about, you know, Thurman EMS not being a thing anymore and Warrensburg being here, but, you know, me coming back into Warrensburg EMS and, and when I took over as president in two thousand eighteen, it was very important to me that, that Thurman felt like they had a place. You know, like, we're also, you know, we're also here to serve you just as much as we're here to serve Warrensburg, like, and that's why, you know, when we, when we got the ambulances and we, lettered them and put Thurman on the side of the ambulance, because it's like we are also serving the town of Thurman, you know what I mean, so,
Mm-hmm.
um, you know, so that, I, 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 it's very important to me that you guys don't feel like, you know, we were, we're not.
I'm glad you came because we've heard, I've heard all kinds of different things, so.
Yeah, no, that's, um, and I can get the numbers, the exact numbers, and I'll be happy to, you know, provide it with a budget and show you guys kind of where we're at with things.
Okay.
Um, you know, and I, and I based the budget, you know, we get fifty thousand dollars a year from the town of Thurman, and, um, we're subsidized also with a, with a co- mutually contract with the town of Stony Creek, and then basically the remainder of what we needed, fell on the shoulders, you know, up, you know, on, on the, the War- the Warrensburg, the Warrensburg side of that, um.
And you might be getting a seventy-five thousand from the county too, I think you will be getting that. Did you know about that?
No.
Oh. One of the EMS squads asked for seventy-five thousand, and at the board meeting, we discussed why not all the EMS squads.
Yeah.
So we're trying to use the ARPA money actually to give all the squads seventy-five thousand more, so you are probably gonna get that.
Right. Yeah. I have applied for ARPA funding through the, through the, um, through the town, through the county, but, yeah.
Mm-hmm. Well, we decided, like, if you're gonna do it for one, you have to do it for all, it should be for all, so I would hope that they'd all vote yes to that.
Right. Yeah, well, when, when it came to ARPA funding, you know, we had to work to make a project or something, you know, something that a lot of us have been thinking about, um, with, uh, our squad is that community paramedicine is very important. Um, and it costs money because you have to have a vehicle, and you have to have a staff member, you know, every day, and what community paramedicine is, 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 you know, let's say that you're having trouble, you know, you're eighty years old and you're at home and you're having trouble taking your medicine, or remember to take your medicine, or you've got, you know, a bad infection in your leg, you know, we can kind of go out there and we can do telemedic, you know, initiate like tele, um, medicine, um, video appointments with your doctors, you don't have to get out of the house, and if you can't get out of the house,
Mm-hmm.
we can help talk to your doctor with you and consult on medication regimens or changes, and we can, you know, help do that stuff there, and then what that does is it helps stay ahead of the curve on your health, so you're, we're not waiting till your leg is like falling off and you're weeping and you can't walk, and now you're having a fever and you're septic, and now you're going by ambulance and going to the hospital, so it kind of puts that, that provider out in the field to, as a resource for people that need it, um, and, and give them access to healthcare.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's, you know, that was kind, that was what we applied for with our.
That's what you put on your ARPA application?
Yeah, yeah, it was, you know, to help kind of launch that, that community paramedicine program, but, yeah, I just didn't want you guys to think that we were, you know, huffing, leaping, and leaving. I, I feel very strongly that you guys are just part of us as, as anybody.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thanks, thanks.
Thank you.
And should you guys have questions at any point, reach out to any of us at the squad, we can answer questions, either kibosh it or fill in the blanks.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm, all right, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
It's good that you came.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, we can move on to our resolutions now.
You guys don't have to sit through all the rest of this, John.
If you wanna stay, you can.
Don't feel embarrassed to join, just get up, walk out.
Yeah, right.
Did anybody have any other questions before we take off?
No, you did a good job.
Any questions?
All right, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, most of my dates are ready. So, the first group of resolutions has to do with the meetings that we were planning earlier.
Mm-hmm.
So, we have a resolution introducing local law and providing for the public notice and hearing for the tax levy override. So, does anybody wanna bring that to the floor so we can talk about that?
I will.
Doug, okay.
I'll second it.
All right. Whereas a local law entitled Tax Levy Limit Override for Fiscal Year Two Thousand Twenty-three is hereby introduced, and whereas copies of the proposed local law have been provided to each member of the Thurman Town Board, be it resolved that the Town Board shall hold a public hearing regarding the proposed local law at the Town Hall, three-eleven Athol Road, Athol, New York, one-two-eight-one-oh, at, and we picked the date in November, um, public hearing, November third, at six P M. And resolve that the Town Clerk shall publish a public notice in the official newspaper of the town of Thurman no later than five business days prior to the public hearing. And there's copies of the, um, what will be in the paper right here. Okay, any discussion?
I just wanna say, just to be clear, so people that are watching this on video or however, that this is only a, um, just in case we need to override, it's not saying we intend to override.
It's a protection, it covers us.
Right, the, the tax levy, well, that's all.
Yeah. Mm-hmm. Okay, all in favor? Bye.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nope, okay, good. Okay. The next resolution is a request from the tax collector to have her own post office box. There are times where she would like to get the mail earlier than anybody's in here in the morning, or possibly on a Saturday. Sometimes people send her things and she just wants to be able to access it on her own time, so, I thought I'd bring it here to, to the downboard and see, so, does anybody wanna bring that, you wanna bring that to the floor? Okay, Charlie? And a second?
I'll second.
Ed, okay. Whereas the tax collector has expressed a need for a separate post office box so that she can get the town tax-related mail during her working schedule, and whereas the tax collector has also stated that she sometimes receives mail during months outside of the regular tax collecting time, and having access to the post office on her own schedule would be more convenient for her. And whereas the post office box should be purchased as soon as possible so that the new address is available for the upcoming town tax bills, be it resolved, the Town Board authorizes the rental of a post office box for the tax collector. The fee is one hundred dollars per year, and will be funded by a budget adjustment moving the expense from the supervisor contractual, A-one-two-two-zero-point-four, to the tax collector contractual, A-one-three-three-zero-point-four. Any discussion? No, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 The next resolution is also a request from the tax collector, um, her computer is now the oldest computer in this building. It's still running Windows Seven, and she has difficulty with the software that she needs to access from the state, so. Would you introduce that one?
Yeah, mine.
Ed, introduce it. And second?
I will.
Seconded.
Randy, okay. Whereas the tax collector has expressed a need for a replacement of her outdated computer as she is the only employee still working with Windows Seven, which is not compatible with necessary software, and whereas it would be beneficial if this purchase was obtained prior to the tax year so that the necessary software can be installed and the upcoming tax bills be printed from the new computer, be it resolved, the Town Board authorizes the purchase of a new computer for the tax collector for an amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty dollars. This amount will be funded by a budget adjustment moving the amount from the supervisor contractual, A-one-two-two-zero-point-four, to the tax collector contractual, A-one-three-three-zero-point-four. All in favor?
Aye.
The next resolution is a request from some of the individuals that use our Town Hall on a very annual or regular basis. It's to purchase ten eight-foot folding tables for the Town Hall that are much lighter to move than these heavy ones here. So, do I have anyone who would introduce this one?
I will.
Doug, and you'll second it, Charlie?
That was Doug and Charlie?
Yep. Whereas the existing tables used for events in the Town Hall are very heavy for the residents to move, are awkward to move because they are so long. Some are broken and some do not have adequate safety mechanisms, whereas it would be beneficial to all residents using the Town Hall for events if newer, lighter, plastic tables that fold and have a handle for moving them around. Be it resolved, the Town Board authorizes the purchase of ten eight-foot plastic folding tables to be funded from the contractual code A-one-nine-nine-zero-point-four. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, before we do approval for the plans, there's a couple of things that I'd like to let you know about, um, in your packet are the estimates from Slic, and we have them for the Town Hall phones and to run a phone out to the landfill. To put the Slic phones here into the Town Hall, looks like, looks like that, do you have it? Or we'll probably start with my email, yeah, okay. There are four different types of plans we can have here at the Town Hall. Unlimited, local, which is Warrensburg, Chestertown, Glens Falls, Lake George, and of course Thurman, um, and that's eighteen forty-five a month. There's also a premium local and regional, which covers every five-one-eight phone number, that's twenty-seven ninety-five a month. And there's also a premium local regional plus, which includes some long distance, and that's thirty-two ninety-five a month. And then there's premium unlimited, which you can call anywhere, and that's fifty-four ninety-five a month. So when I was talking to Jeff, um, he's the representative at Slic, I thought that maybe we could have two of the local regional phone lines, and the other six could be just local regional, and then one fax line. Because I figured if we had one that we could call outside the region upstairs, secretary could always go in and use my phone to make a phone call like that, and we would save some money that way. And then, one of the other regional and interstate phones would be down here, probably in your office, because if Sue is here, she can go into your office and use it if she needed to make a phone call that was out of state.
I get all kinds of phone calls, and they can be from anywhere.
Coming in?
Yes.
But.
That is, I don't know if that makes sense, because we, we never know, they do too, because people are buying houses like crazy in Thurman, you never know where they're coming from, I have one eight-oh-two for my today.
Right. Coming in doesn't matter, it's go.
Oh, just go, but you have to return your phone call.
Yeah, if it's a message, yeah.
And I, I, every day I have phone calls from all over the place.
Well, long distance, if we get the regional plus, that's only five cents a minute on the long distance. And I think you get to pick th- it says unlimited local, regional, plus pick three, so I think you can pick three, um, area codes possibly for that. Yep?
Just a thought.
Mm-hmm.
Let me hit that up quick.
What?
Let me hit that up quick.
Oh, yeah, I know.
You're on the phone, and then before you know it, you've spent a long time on it. Just, just a thought.
Yeah.
I'm not saying I agree, I'm not saying disagree, I'm just, just a thought.
Mm-hmm. Well, we could try it and always change our plan, we can always bump our plan up if we find that it's gonna be costing too much to pay by the minute, we could always do that. But the quote that we have for that is three hundred and five dollars and fifty-five cents.
For the Town Hall?
For a month, yeah.
Three fifty-five, what was it per?
It's three oh-five fifty-five.
Three oh-five and fifty-five cents a month.
Oh, three oh-five and fifty-five cents per month.
And I added up our phone bills now. Yeah. It is, it is higher than that, well, it's about the same, I think it's three forty-five. Yeah, I added up the Verizon, an average Verizon, and we have like a Verizon Business. I have them here if you wanna look at them. We have a Verizon bis- a regular Verizon is, um, about two fifty-eight, and then we have the Verizon Business, which averages about maybe five bucks. Then we have Magna Five, that's a hundred and fifteen. And then we have Ring Squared, and that's, was forty-six and then fifty-seven, so it adds up to be a little more than Slic a month that we're paying. Now for the landfill, right now I think your phone is about thirty bucks, thirty bucks a month we're paying. So, the quote I got for the landfill is twenty-seven ninety-five plus thirty-five cents for the nine-one-one availability. Now, I didn't know if you wanted internet up there or not, we probably don't need that, but that's eighty dollars a month for internet, but you don't feel you need that? Okay, I can have that taken out of there.
We just need something, we can talk.
Just need a better phone. Now.
So what is the full landfill estimate?
The estimate for the landfill is, um, twenty-seven ninety-five and thirty-five cents, so say under thirty bucks.
So just say under thirty?
Yeah, I mean, if you need an exact number, I can, oh wait, I gotta copy it right here, hold on. Yeah, twenty-eight thirty. Now, the fiber cost is eight hundred and sixty-four, but I'm pretty sure that fiber cost means internet as well as phone. I don't know if you need to have the internet to have the phone?
No.
Or are they just running a fiber optic line?
I'm not sure.
I'll have to find out about that. Yeah, so, yeah, that's what he wrote, he said, I'm not sure what service you want at the transfer station, so I put down our lowest internet and phone service, which would mean you would have local-only calling.
Yeah, yeah.
That's okay.
That's all we get, I, mostly.
Yeah, you're pretty much residents calling, you know, and you calling them.
Residents, you know, scheduling delivery and pickup, that's all, they're all local.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's the initial cost, yeah.
Well, that's regional, so you'd be able to call any five-one-eight number, the twenty-seven ninety-five is any five-one-eight, that would be okay for you, right? All right.
Now, that's even if we put the line through ourselves.
Well, where we would save is on that, yeah, because, um, it's, it's like seventeen hundred and seventy feet from the hole to you, but what he said to s- that we could do to save money is dig our own trench along the road, and they'll just drop the cable there, we could run that up there, like you did with the electric, right? Isn't that how the electricity was done?
I, I, I did my own part.
You did your own.
Yeah, I did mine, you did mine.
And I did my neighbor's, so.
Oh, well, that's good, yeah. And Pat said they could dig the trench along the side.
And the thing is, it's an investment if in the future we put a highway garage there, um, I would just mention to them that we're planning, I'm putting the highway garage there.
I did mention that, yeah. Well, that's why, but, I thought if you needed internet, I didn't know if you needed the internet to have the phone.
You might, I'm not sure.
I suspect you do.
I think so.
I don't, I don't know for sure, but I suspect.
I can ask that.
I had used that before, so I don't know.
Because your phone is actually going over the internet.
Going over the internet, yeah.
The internet goes off over your phone.
Oh, 'cause you have it, so you know, yeah.
I have it, I have it through Slic, but, but, but the internet's off, I don't have a phone.
Exactly, you're right, I don't need it, mine's the same one. Exactly, you're right, I don't need it, mine's the same one, that's right.
But if you're getting internet, like to get on Google and all that, is that different than having it just for a phone? Or do you have to have, do you have to pay the internet fee as well?
It's, it, I, I think it's, 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 yeah, it's, it's two, it's, it's all one.
It's bundled together.
Yeah.
Okay. But still, let's see, if we're looking at. Yeah, it'd be a hundred and eight a month. But like you said, it kind of is an investment as far as that, if the highway garage is up there, we're already running more than two-thirds of the way. Yeah.
When, when I had my regular phone with Verizon, it was, because we have unlimited long distance, it was ninety-eight dollars, this was phone.
Hard drive.
I have unlimited long distance and internet for a hundred and six.
Yeah.
So that was pretty good.
Yeah.
Yeah, hard drive, it's a safe thing, yeah.
It worked great, except for one towel.
At least you can hear on it, you know, right now, you just can't hear the sound.
His phone is not good up there right now.
That's what they tell me when it is.
So should we go ahead with a resolution to move this forward? Or do you need more information or have any more questions? You're set to go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay, you too? What about you?
Yeah, that's good.
Okay.
You know, I am.
I know.
So were we gonna follow this, if we're gonna, yeah?
Resolution to switch our phone service to Slic.
I know.
To switch.
At the town hall and the landfill.
Town hall and the landfill.
Okay. And we already had a discussion, you have any more questions or anything? No? Okay.
Make your motion.
Oh, someone has to bring it to the floor. I'll bring it to the floor.
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Takes care of that. Let's see, I did want to let you know that there's trunk or treat happening October twenty-ninth. We do have a Portageon coming up Friday for that one day. It's going to be held by Dipakil Wilderness, they did it last year. And they need help with food donations if anybody wants to. I am going to be going up there and decorating at the rec field. And I also said I would help with the plates, the bowls, cups, napkins, silverware, and stuff like that. I did want to take some money from our youth allowance money, which got doubled, we have twenty-six hundred dollars to spend on the youth now. I wanted to get some small pumpkins and after the trick or tr- trunk or treat, have pumpkin decorating up there, so how do you feel about that, okay?
It's fine.
I don't need a resolution for that, I'm just letting you know. Okay, I also wanted to let you know the ice rink has been ordered. It should be here within a week or two. That's being paid for out of the Stewart Shops grant. And there was, it's a little over the four thousand because I ordered two hockey goals as well, but that can come out, be reimbursed through our youth. Oh, and another thing I wanted to tell you that's not good news is the senior transportation ends January first, twenty twenty-third, they have no more funding. So I don't know, I don't know how they're going to notify the seniors or if they're leaving that up to us, but as of January one, there'll be no more senior bus.
How many people do we have in town who are using it?
I think eight or nine, I talked to Sue Baker about that. Yep, so.
And there's not any replacement option for that?
Not through, not through them, although they are, like, there's an email in here from them about it. Because I wrote back and I, I said I received an email, does it mean there'll be, no longer be transportation at all or that the town will not be, be reimbursed? And they said that it won't be happening at all. However, the future, in the future, they want to trade their vans in for a smaller van or an SUV and provide emergency rides on an individual basis. So they're going to try and cover it, maybe doctor's appointments, I don't know what they mean by emergency rides, but.
So they can't, the county's not, can't do that.
Yeah.
I want to make sure I put that in so nobody gets involved.
No, they call it CSBG Cares Funding. That is ended. And the agency's board of directors have decided to discontinue. I guess some towns aren't doing, aren't doing the senior transport because it says since COVID, we have only been providing senior transportation to four towns on a twice-a-month basis, which does not cover the cost of service. Okay. We scheduled all our meetings, but do I need to do that publicly, announce them?
Uh, yeah, I think it's a good idea to go through that, so it's on the video.
Okay. Um, let's see. Our first meeting we covered was the public hearing, and that's on the third.
And you, you should do one to, to call the public hearing for the preliminary budget, it's the same day.
Preliminary budget, yeah, we could do the override and the preliminary budget same day.
So this is going to be a resolution to call a public hearing for the preliminary budget, right?
Yep.
November third, and the time was six P M?
Yep, six P M.
Or, mm, okay. Same time as the other one, right? November third, six P M?
Yeah, six P M for both, we'll just do them both.
And who made the motion?
I'll make the motion, okay.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. Saturday, the fifth, I'd like to have a public information meeting open to anyone in the public to cover four different topics. EMS, the highway garage, short-term rentals, and Slic to the people who are not included in their coverage.
So EMS, let me make sure that EMS.
That was four P M on Saturday, is that okay? On the fifth.
Yeah.
Four, four P M you said?
What? Four P M.
Four P M on the.
On the fifth.
On the fifth, okay. And that's for EMS, highway garage.
Short-term rentals.
Short-term.
And Slic to the people who right now aren't covered, you know, the areas that they're not covering. And then we have our, um, there one more meeting, right?
November one.
Public hearing, information.
Budget workshop?
Budget workshop, yeah.
November first.
Budget workshop is November first.
Four thirty.
Four thirty. Does that need to be in the paper though, a budget workshop?
No, but I think it's good that we announce it on the video so people.
Okay, and it'll be on the website too, right?
And that one's at four thirty.
Four thirty, yeah.
Are you doing a resolution to call that or just calling it?
Just calling it. Okay, so. Forsight Fire Inspector was here today because the fire marshal isn't, um, they said we had some issues here, so he'll be back to re-inspect. When Forsight came today, we need four smoke detectors. The one in the court is broken, needs to be replaced. And they also want us to have smoke detectors in tax collector's office, the historian's office, and the assessor's office. So I'm going to purchase them, four of them, and just put them up. And then I can call the fire marshal or Forsight, we'll have to come back first to re-inspect, put a tag out there on the wall, and then the fire marshal will be back to re-inspect. Next thing I have is Meals on Wheels, Sarah Hall's been doing Meals on Wheels. She is now going to be going to Florida in January for a few months, so I'll be looking for somebody to take over from that. Harry wants to do it. I'll see how he is come January, and if he can, he really wants to do it, so we'll see. And the last thing is code enforcer. It's been an issue, we don't have anybody to enforce our rules, you know, our laws. So even if we have short-term rental, a local law, who goes out when there's a problem? So I'm thinking we need to think about what we want to do for that, if it's going to be a position we put in the budget, if we ask around and see if there's anyone who would want to be the code enforcer here. I'm just putting it out there, it's not a resolution or anything, just discussion to think about what we want to do for that.
We should be.
Sounds like if we're going to consider it, we should probably make a list of what duties and responsibilities they would have and maybe formulate that into like a job description, so somebody, yeah.
You should be, you used to have one.
Even, even Tuck said we need one.
Yep.
Yeah.
I agree.
All right, so I'll look into that, and if anybody else wants to get information, we can all do that. Oh, and did you want to go into executive session?
Um, yeah, we can, the, the only thing I had is, and I mentioned this to you, Deb, I sent a list of comments and suggestions to the, uh, gentleman that's building the town, new town's website. The town, what he's done so far looks good. I just picked up on some things that, you know, we need to include or to change. And I sent those comments to him, I don't know what his time schedule is to address all of them, but he's pretty responsive, so hopefully fairly soon we should have a new town website up and active.
Yeah.
I think I sent him an email also about helping us develop a new Facebook page.
Yep.
So that way we can get information to people and tell them, hey, look, there's something new on the town website, go look at it. Stuff like that, so.
And I did want to find out what it takes to do the online tax payments. A lot of people call and they would prefer to do it that way, especially if they're out of state.
Yeah.
But I don't know what that involves, so I'll have to look into that.
I wasn't, I didn't actually put that in as necessarily a recommendation. I, when I was reviewing other town websites, I noted a couple of them had that option on there. I honestly don't know what it entails to include that in a town website, and there, I'm sure there's a cost associated with it.
Yeah.
With setting up the website to be able to do that. But I just thought it might be something that we want to consider. You know, everybody's going that way when it comes to paying bills and stuff, they pay their bills through the internet and it just makes their life easier and, uh, you know.
I'll ask Jamie too, what she thinks about it. Since she'll be the one who would have to be reconciling that.
Sure.
Okay.
So it's paying the taxes on the website, I think, whether you're looking into.
Yeah, online payments for tax bill.
It's a consideration, something that could be worked into the website.
Okay, so now I need these numbers.
Can you get one more of those?
Did you, did you want to go up for executive session on anything?
The information I shared with you, I, i- is that something that we need to go into executive session for? Or can we just state that publicly?
I bet you could probably just state it, but I also have, I also have that other, um, situation with the person on the bike.
Right, that's an active case that we're discussing legal strategy with, so we need to go into executive session for that.
I think we should do that, yeah.
Before we do that, can we pass a resolution so I can get rid of that old thing?
Oh, yeah, okay. Yeah, I forgot about that, thank you. In fact, we should cover a lot of that stuff. There's a lot of old stuff in the basement.
Yep.
And there's been like a couple people who've suggested we clean out some of that and make room down there. And then there's that old piece of equipment from the assessor's office. He'd like us to be able to dispose of that. And there's some broken chairs, things like that, so I don't know, I don't know exactly the rule for just getting rid of things, but.
If it's stuff that has any value, don't we have to do it through like surplus auction the county does or something like that? Or is this stuff that we're just talking about throwing away?
We have both types of things, we have things that are okay, and then we have like that doesn't work, it's broken. And we have, upstairs, we have a shredder that's jammed, it doesn't work. We have another one that's not a crosscut shredder, it's a strip shredder, that still works. And downstairs, we have filing cabinets and printers, which are probably, don't work. So I don't know the rule for getting rid of it, but some people have asked if we could get rid of it. So what do you think about that, from getting, how do you go about getting rid of this stuff?
Send them to Elon and recycle.
Elon, yeah, what about that, Elon, I'm not kidding, no. They take that.
They, they take them.
And they pay us for it.
Sometimes, yeah.
Yeah.
Sometimes, sometimes they don't, it all depends on how old they are.
And what it is. Well.
Sometimes we go, yeah.
How about we do a resolution to get rid of anything that is totally useless and broken? And.
Anything that could be recycled and.
Yeah.
Is there anything that could be sold and reused, I should say?
Elon recycles.
Which, since we're talking about that, we probably have some stuff that's left over from the old White Space project. In fact, we still have stuff on the poles out there that needs to be taken down.
Needs to be taken down, and that stuff's got to be, somebody could use it somewhere, can't they, or do you think so?
I don't know.
You just don't want to throw it out.
What they don't want will put in a dumpster.
Yeah.
A lot of times people bring them stuff.
Yeah.
And they bring it in a car alone and then take a car alone home.
I like that, yeah.
Yeah. I know, I thought when I was up there taking pictures of the good stuff and then put it on a website and people could come down and get it.
They can take a lot.
Yeah.
Sages from paying to get rid of it. It's expensive, prices are going up.
Yeah, I know.
Like, to get rid of everything that's useless or broken.
Yep.
Yes, okay, that would be, that'll be a start anyway.
Yeah.
Who made the motion?
I did.
I'll second it.
Oh, wait, I got done.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
Get rid of garbage.
That's good, let Doug have it.
Yeah. Okay, so then, all in favor of getting rid of the garbage, say aye.
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 Okay. We can do that now.
Okay, I'll take it.
Bring your truck.
I will.
So you want to do payment of claims first, like go upstairs, or do you want to go upstairs?
It doesn't matter to me, we could do payment of claims right now. All right, I just got to add them together. Payment of claims.
We should also ask if anybody wants to go to the floor to say.
Sure, we'll do that first. Okay. Resolution to approve payment of the claims, who's bringing that to the floor? Charlie, okay, who's seconding it?
I'll second it.
Randy? Okay, resolution to approve payment of the claims, total of abstract ten general fund for October twentieth, twenty twenty-two is eleven thousand, six seventy-six, eighty-eight. Total of abstract ten highway fund, October twentieth, twenty twenty-two, is three hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and three dollars and sixty-six cents. Most of which is chips, right? Total claims for October twentieth, twenty twenty-two, is three hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars and fifty-four cents. Any discussion on it?
Um, I do have one question, I happened to think of this, I, I noticed it earlier and I was going to ask you and I forgot about it. Um, on the monthly report that you gave us, um, it shows under the highway increases nine forty-three, twenty-two and decreases zero?
That shouldn't be. That shouldn't be.
I don't think she paid the bills.
I paid them. I did pay them. I can tell you what they were.
You just say, "Look," so make sure everyone knows that.
Let me just find that. When I closed out the month, it must not have picked up my cash dispersals. Should be a cash dispersals code in here. Here, it was seventy-four thousand, nine hundred Here, it was seventy-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty dollars. That's weird, cause look, it's on this one.
Yeah.
But it didn't get picked up on that one.
Yeah, I just happened to notice it as I was going through them.
Yeah, that is strange. Is it all right? Hmm, well, the increases aren't on there either. What's the increases? Hmm, I'm gonna have to give you a revised supervisor report.
You can just email it to me.
Okay, I'll ma-, I'll email to everybody, cause that's definitely not right. It was, huh, it's weird, it picked it up in one spot and not another. Look.
Yep.
Okay. Good call, Randy, good call. Okay. Okay, anybody else?
Maybe, okay, you're welcome.
Yep. Well, we could just say all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep.
Would you wanna do the executive session?
Yeah, we're gonna, no, we're gonna do privilege of the floor first.
Um, the court cases, we had your order, is there any students on that, or anything?
We don't have any yet, don't have any update yet.
Just haven't heard anything, so.
No, I haven't, I haven't heard from Mark yet.
Oh, you haven't heard, you haven't heard?
Yeah.
I guess I'll have to bring it up, that's curious.
Did you have any, can you, no? Then I'd like to make a motion to go up for privilege of the floor.
You mean executive session?
Executive session, yeah, thanks, I'm tired.
Yep.
To discuss.
Pending litigation.
Pending litigation, thank you, Randy.
I couldn't make that out, discuss what?
To discuss pending litigation.
Who made the motion? You made it, who made the second?
I'll be second.